Please remain standing and let's think about our servicemen and women serving our country around the world and giving it United States protecting us. And our first responders on a, where they put their lives in danger every day. Thank you. Welcome to the Village Board meeting, Monday, April 2nd, 7:00 PM. Upcoming meeting, Monday, April 9th, will be a public hearing to consider the fiscal year, May 31st, 2019 tentative budget, water rates, sewer rates, solid waste fee, and to consider a local law extended to exceed the real property tax cap limit. We'll have a Village Board special meeting, Monday, April 16th, at 7:00 PM to adopt the 2019 budget. We'll also have a public hearing on April 16th, at 7:05, to discuss amending the local law for live entertainment in the central and general business district. So have the Village Board workshop meeting, which will be Tuesday, May 1st. So that's a change on the agenda. At 7:00 PM. And the next Village Board meeting will be Monday, May 7th, at 7:00 PM. We have an update from the fire department.
Just a guy's been doing a lot of work with the storms. You know, we had the big, big snowstorm there, we had a lot of calls that night. We had a small fire in the dryer vent over Cross Street, but the guy's been doing well and everything's still good.
Yeah, great. I was over there at that Cross Street dryer fire, that was a great response, everybody really showed up right, right outside the back door of the fire department, but it was a great, a great show.
Yeah, we had a lot of guys show up that day.
And going to the storm cleanup, we had the fire department on call for, I don't know, 20 hours?
We were out quite a while.
Right. Really assisting and aiding in the DPW and the police department in cleaning up the downed trees and branches, so thank you, please relay that to the, to the guys. Thank you. It's now 7:10. I'd like to call a public hearing to authorize the village to undertake the appropriate action to remedy the property maintenance conditions pursuant to Village Code 205-5 and 205-6B, and to charge the cost thereof to the property owner on the next regular tax bill pursuant to Village Code 205-66, at the property located at 27 Hillside Avenue, Suffolk, New York, Tax Lot, Section 54.0, Block 3, Lot 57. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to, Mr. Magrino, I'm sorry, Mr. Magrino?
I don't know if you want to get started on it. As the board's aware, there's a condition at 27 Hillside that the building department has been aware of for quite some time. Over the course of the last several years, the property has been put in violation, we've had court hearings on it. There was a conviction a year or so ago with respect to the occupant of the premises. I will let Mr. Ortiz from the Village Building Department speak to the conditions, but just in terms of the prerequisites as to how we got to where we are. On February 24th, we noticed a remove violation was prepared and served pursuant to the statute on the last known owners and occupant of the residence. Last known owners were the estate of Maria Anzelmo, the estate of Drew Webster, and John Anzelmo as the reported occupant and/or distributie, if you will, under, under those estates that I mentioned. The notice of removal violation is set forth in your packet. Indicates the areas that Mr. Anzelmo and the estate were ordered to clear, and the reasons why. Again, I'll let Mr. Ortiz get into that. That notice was served pursuant to the statute as indicated. It was also served personally on Mr. Anzelmo on February 26th, 2018. It was served at the property, yeah. And posted at the property. And the timeframe within which the property owner was notified to remedy the violation was March 9th. So from February 26th to March 9th, they had an opportunity to remedy the condition. Again, I'll defer to code enforcement officers, but my understanding is there were no efforts made towards remedying the conditions that set forth in that notice of violation. Thereafter, as a result of that, a public hearing notice was scheduled, again pursuant to statute, for tonight. Again, it was served pursuant to the statute. And I actually had contact with somebody who's in touch with Mr. Anzelmo. Had an email communication with a, I believe it's Shauna White, Lights. And I emailed it to her last week. And for the record, I'll note Mr. Anzelmo is actually in the room tonight, so I don't think there's any issue with respect to notice. The village is authorized pursuant to Section 205-6 of the Village Code to act after a public hearing and to remedy the condition and charge the cost of that remedial measure to the property at the next tax bill. So that's where we are at an introduction. Maybe I'll ask Mr. Ortiz to step up and give an indication of what the condition is at the property.
Good evening, I'm Randy Ortiz, one of the code enforcement officers for the Village of Suffolk. After numerous complaints were received by the adjoining properties, we proceeded to do violations and we tried to work with Mr. Anzelmo to get this property cleaned up. I had conversation with him. And that's why we're here today, because nothing has been done at the property. All of the items that are listed in our violation complaint, basically the backyard's just filled with outside storage, all kinds of items from wheelbarrows to refrigerator, a bar that's not fit for use on the public highway. And there's also a roll-off dumpster that's been in the back in the front yard that the neighbors have had to look at in the residence since July of last year. So that's basically why we're here and why we made the complaint and did the violations. And we're seeking to do the cleanup of the property soon as possible.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else here from the public that would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Jonathan Turkle, 579 Montague Court. Just in regards to that, so when, is this, is this property in foreclosure or is somebody still owning it? Is that right, if I asked the question?
Sure.
Does anybody own the property or is it still there?
Mr. Magrino? Oh, okay, we can answer at the end.
So if it's, if it's not in foreclosure, if there's, there's wheelbarrows and shovels in someone's backyard, is that set forth now for the rest of the village? So if people just have things in their backyard, and then are we going to start maintaining everyone's property up until, up until it's fixed? So if somebody goes into foreclosure, let's say 25 houses go into foreclosure, and it's four years, are we going to maintain all of those properties moving forward? And if we are, is it going to be through public bid and for the private contractor, are we going to use our own resources?
That's good. Okay, we'll wait for a response, so we're going to give everybody else the opportunity to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come up, state your name and address.
My name is Vivian DeGroot, I live at 21 Hillside Avenue. I have a few questions for the, the house, the board. Number one is, is there any law in terms of who and when you can put a dumpster in front of your house? I mean, could I tomorrow call up the empty dumpster, get a dumpster in front of my house? Is there anything to that? I know if I want to cut down a tree, I have to come and pay you $150 to do that. But is there anything with dumpsters?
Okay. We're going to, we're going to address all of the questions at the end.
Just lining them up.
We're lining them all up, yes, try to expedite it.
And I've heard that there was, there is a law on the books that's something about not having a dumpster in front of your house for that long. I may be right, I may be wrong, I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Okay.
And what can we do to prevent this from happening in the future?
That's a good question.
Has this been a recurrence?
Is it going to reoccur? That's what I'm concerned about.
It would be nice not to have to go through this procedure again in terms of, I'm not saying that, you know, it's up to the county, the village, the town to decide what in, what isn't, isn't in terms of the property. But to sit here and have to go through this.
That's, that's the due process of, you know, our protections, yes.
I understand that, but this is the second time since I've been here that this has happened. It just would be nice to have a more streamlined approach to dealing with that.
To remedying, remedying the problem, okay. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Mr. Magrino?
Just to address the couple of bits.
Excuse me, Mr. Magrino, I'm sorry. Would you like to speak now, so we can address all the questions at the same time?
Good evening, my name is John Anzelmo, on 27 Hillside Avenue. I would like to reference as to what some of the questions of my neighbors and the inspectors have come up with questions. Number one, because there seems to be a concern, which I can understand, of someone having a dumpster on their property. First of all, that is from a registered, certified, licensed New York State caller. And he was very concerned of losing his dumpster. He was contacted and told that if they didn't take it away, it was going to Teplis Recycling. He clearly explained that to me on the phone. He asked me if I knew if that was a fact. And I told him, I says, "I can't challenge that, I don't know, I'll have to find out." Now, he told me it's about a $5,000 investment, the dumpster. There is a genuine purpose why it is there, and it's under the direction of the Board of Health and Promona New York. We're working in conjunction with them, and I had their representative, the chief person, Brian Welty, there today at the property. And we had access to the house, and he saw work that is taking place. And I asked him, I says, "Is it very pertinent that I have proof that I'm in contact with your office, is work in progress?" He said, "I prepare a letter for you, and I'll have it for you tomorrow." I asked him if I could have something today. I said, "I expect to come to this meeting 7 o'clock at night." He said, "Unfortunately, I have quite a schedule, I can't guarantee that." Now, I want to go back to the owner of the dumpster. I asked him, I says, "Who contacted you?" His name is Mike. And he said, "Someone by the name of Ireland," and I believe he is sitting here, that's him right there. And I do with the 21 Hillside Avenue.
This is, you're addressing the board, and I think the concern here is directed to us and the complaints that have been filed and the resolutions that is put forth in front of us.
Okay.
We're not addressing the dumpster being in the yard. We are addressing that, but we're not considering that right now. So if you want to address the public hearing in regards to the debris that is contained in and around the entire house, front, side, rear, driveways, address it now.
Yes, sir. Well, the official that served me with notice of this has made mention tonight that I was served on February 24th. First of all, I arrived there to do some work on the property on March 6th. And he was there in a personal vehicle, and he got out of it, and a police officer got out of a police car, and he handed me a piece of paper, an envelope, and says, "You're served." Very direct, and that's what I was told of his voice was. I asked him, I said, "What is today's date that pertains to this?" And he says, "I don't know." The police officer was standing there, and he was very courteous, I asked him. He says, "It's the 6th of March." Now, one of the reasons I bring this up is the fact that we have been inundated with a March and a winter that just seems to be ongoing. It's what nature has put before us, and it's very unfortunate, and it has caused a lot of hardships for many different venues.
Are you trying to imply that the weather had something to do with you cleaning up the property? Is that what you're trying to say?
That is part of it.
Okay, so this has been there for years, so, okay, let's move on, what is the next issue?
Essentially, I have an issue that's twofold. It's not just the outside of the house. If someone asks if the house is in foreclosure, it is not in foreclosure. There is something ongoing with the ownership of the house within my family, and it's being handled with an attorney, and the documents I presented to the Board of Health because they wanted to know who they were dealing with. And far as I know, the other people involved in this legally, I don't see them here, I don't think that they were notified. And that is of the ownership of the property. But I strongly want to recommend the fact that I have an issue in my life that this will be in my name entirely the property. I will be secured the ownership of it. I have proof of it, and documents to that effect. And if I could get the grace of the village to give me another date to come back here, whenever you feel you would like to. But it's a lot different when you actually own something yourself. And I'm 72 years old at this point in my life, and this is a very, very serious issue. And I don't want to try to, how can I say, sidetrack what decisions you have to make. I was told by the owner of the dumpster, it's a given that they're going to make a decision whether they're going to go into town themselves and take everything out of there, or hire someone to do it. So naturally, I'm looking to try to address this the best I can, and the best way I can legally address it. And I would appreciate if I can have some forgiveness in this issue.
Okay.
Who is the owner of the dumpster? Mike Medicato, and his place of business, he keeps most of his equipment in Hillburn, New York. And he wants an answer on this from me tomorrow morning because he's not abandoning his piece of equipment.
Okay, so at the outcome of this hearing, we'll have an answer, and you can provide him that answer at the outcome of the hearing.
Now, it is counterproductive to force taking that away because it has to be, have something there. There's a lot that has to be taken away with a dumpster. So to take that one out and bring a different one there is, as I say, counterproductive. And I have experienced the house alongside my house more than a year with dumpster or dumpsters. With work ongoing, and I had no fault with it. A house around the corner from me has had a dumpster there for seven months, it's been recently taken away. And there's one on Washington Avenue that's been there since last fall. But I don't think that I should make too much of any bringing any issue about the dumpster per se. There is a lot of physical work needed to be done.
And there are multiple violations that have cited, so we'll continue with the public hearing, and we'll have an answer at the, at the end of this hearing.
If I have a reason to talk again, am I allowed to talk?
If we continue to have the public comment, yes.
But as I say, I would appreciate if I could come back and address the council with some progress. And with a contractor, with a contract, a signed contract, for the work that needs to be done, that I will do on my own. I'm no position to just generate a bill. Alright, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anzelmo. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak or comment? So at this time, I'd like to close the public comment. Okay, Mr. Magrino?
Some of the questions that came up, Mr. Anzelmo answered. With respect to the foreclosure, it is not in a bank foreclosure, there's no, my understanding is there's no mortgage on the property. However, I did speak to the County Real Property Services, and there had been a tax foreclosure scheduled that had been postponed.
Right.
The status of that, I do not know, it's, it's the type. My understanding is the taxes have not been paid, it hasn't been remedied, but that it eventually will go back, unless the taxes are paid, it will go back through that process.
But currently, it is not?
The taxes.
The taxes are not paid?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, this was as of, I think, two weeks ago, I spoke to Real Property Services. It has to go through a process. My understanding is at some point, and that's at their discretion, they will go through that process again if the taxes aren't paid. So that's where it is, respect to that. With respect to some of the other questions, Mr. Ortiz didn't mention it, but the items that are in the yard include, and this is outside, a plastic fence lattice, a refrigerator, indoor furniture, including a coffee table, end tables, chairs, filing cabinets, cabinet with drawers, a steel drum, a wooden 2x4 table, trailer hitch, tarp, pallets, microwave, metal shelving, air bottle, rolled-up carpeting, cement blocks. And that's all in the rear yard, and the front yard is a 30-yard metal container. In addition, I shall ask Mr. Ortiz, is carpeting, pieces of wallboard, mailbox, old mailbox, suitcase, empty cordboard boxes, again, in the front yard, as well as the vehicle that Mr. Ortiz mentioned. To address the question that was brought up by the gentleman, obviously, the village is not in the habit of going around and cleaning up properties. This is a matter, in my experience, I'd say at least 10 years that I've been aware of, not this particular junk per se, but this property having been in court, having gotten violations, sometimes it's rectified, sometimes it's not. So it's been a plague on this neighborhood for quite some time. And again, that's the reason why the village determined to take action on this particular property. With respect to questions about foreclosure, there are laws, recent laws passed in the state with respect to the rights that a municipality has with respect to foreclosed properties, and who can be held responsible in terms of the banks now, whether, it used to be it was treated until the bank formally took over. There's kind of a gap between the owner and the bank until it took the deed, but things have changed on that. So there are separate laws with respect to foreclosed properties, we're not proceeding under those laws at this point. Just going to the property maintenance standards of the code of the Village of Suffolk.
Dumpsters in the front yard, I guess that would pertain to the Village Code and dumpsters in general.
Yeah, we don't, the Village of Suffolk does not have anything, I know recently I have seen some other municipalities have, excuse me, addressed things like pods and dumpsters, and having a timeframe and requirement to maybe get a building permit, to be honest, certain period of time, obviously the necessary construction. So as of this time, we don't, the Village of Suffolk does not have something like that, but that is something worthy of consideration.
So what would, to Mr. Anzelmo's point with regard to the dumpsters, what, if anything, could the village do about that?
Well, you know, our position is that it's, it has been there for, you know, almost a year, and that it constitutes the hazard to have been there for that long. My understanding is if the village authorizes this, that the owner of the dumpster will come and get it. Right now, it's a contractual issue between him and Mr. Anzelmo, who wants to get, obviously get paid, but he'd rather have the dumpster back than have the village take any action with respect to that. But again, in terms of personal property, you know, we can, I'll speak to Mr. Soliki about that with respect to either holding the dumpster or it seems to me to make sense that we request that the dumpster owner.
Remove it.
Remove it. You know, subject to whatever needs, Mr. Anzelmo has a perspective, he can.
Do you know if there is an identifying name or number, full number, on that dumpster?
They've spoken, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, I had, I've had two conversations with the owner of the dumpster. It's Machetti, I think you pronounce Machetti, out of Hillburn Karting. And I've had two conversations with him, basically letting him know where this was going, or what our position was, and asking him that, you know, what he was going to do with the dumpster. And so he's aware of it. He's definitely aware that this is going on.
Anyone else like to speak? Please come up to the microphone. I'm sorry, alright, hold on, Ira. Come up to the front, you'll, and then. Please state your name and address.
My name is Vivian DeGroot, and I'm from Hillburn, New York. And I'm also an alderman for the state of New York. And I represent the age. And Mr. Anzelmo is definitely of age, over 50, finally considered an aged person. And he's just frozen inside. He doesn't, he's beside himself, he doesn't know what to say, what to do. And I would like to ask all of you, particularly that young man that came up and spoke first, to have some compassion and some love for you seniors. Because I've walked.
Vivian, what, what is your name, I'm sorry?
Vivian DeGroot.
DeGroot.
And I live in Hillburn, I'm your neighbor.
Okay, Vivian.
And I knew, known Mr. Anzelmo for a while. We became friends at Suffolk Library. And we discovered we had a lot in common. He was born the very year that I graduated from high school. And so I now represent the age. And I would like to ask all of you to give him some more time about, I understand about how junky the property is and everything, but I personally.
Have you personally seen it?
Did I see it?
Yeah.
Yes, when he spoke to me about it, I asked him to please show it to me. And so I would like to help him. And I would like to organize a committee to help him.
Okay, so we'll take that into consideration, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
My name is Ira Okon. I live on twenty-one Hillside Avenue. Um, after getting tired of looking at the dumpster, there's a couple of people on Hillside Avenue that actually work for carding companies. I was informed that in the front of the dumpster where the trucks hook up to it, generally, there are markings or weldings or things like that. Um, using a camera and standing across the street, there are none of those markings. Um, one of the gentlemen who works for a carding company said, "I know whose it is." And this is how you get in touch with them. Um, I called him. He was very receptive. He was very friendly. Um, but he wanted to know how he was going to get paid. Um, I said, "Well, you know, let me have a number." And he said, "Well, I have to take a look and see how much stuff is in the dumpster." Spoke to him the next day, um, and he said that he needed to receive about five hundred dollars in payment to remove the dumpster. Um, I actually was considering if it was under, if it was around three hundred dollars of paying it myself, just 'cause I'm just tired of looking at the dumpster. Um, the guy is very nice, and I don't really know why. If he's got a going business, he left the dumpster to sit there for a year. You'd think that if he had enough business to keep it busy, he would have just come pick it up and put it someplace. From what I understand, the going rate for a dumpster like that is seven hundred dollars. So, that's a little bit of an answer to the question of the dumpster.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I, I, it slipped by me to mention this, but, um, in regards to what the nice lady was mentioning about getting this put together and trying to get this resolved, this is actually going to be, if it happens, we actually clean the property two times a week. Two times. I've been at this since two thousand and six. It's been done twice a week. I just want to make sure the public understands that.
I believe it was three times.
Twice.
Because the, the, the second time, no action was taken. The resolution was passed. This is the third time. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is, if this, if this happens, it would be the third time.
This is the fourth time.
Well, I wasn't, I'm not aware of that other time, but, uh, I personally oversaw the cleaning twice.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Anzalmo? You can need, need to speak to the microphone, please.
I would, uh, like to make you aware, I have some pictures of my property. And I have a question. At one point, I had four sheds. Because it's actually, the property fifty years. That's five decades. And, uh, from what I understand, there's a car there that's mentioned, and that is not an issue. That can be driven away, the car. That's no, no problem whatsoever. There's plans made to address that. Um, but I, one thing I want to present to you, I have some pictures of some of the sheds that I had there on the property that I was told I had to take away, and I did take away in the past. And did you have any questions? Could I come up and show them to you?
Can, can I ask you a question? You seem to be using your ownership of the property and lack of ownership of the property somewhat interchangeably depending on, um, let me finish my talk for a minute. Depending on the circumstances. Um, are you aware of whether or not a deed, an executed deed with transfer docs was tendered to your lawyer by the lawyer for the estate?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And what's your answer to that? Was it?
Best to my knowledge, it was.
Yeah, okay.
It's incomplete at this time.
And why would that be, uh, why, why do you...
Well, it's not registered with the county to change.
Okay, but whose obligation do you think it would be to file the deed? Once you've been given everything you need to record it, whose obligation would it be to file the deed?
Well, uh, the, the people that you have spoken to from legal aid?
From where?
Legal aid?
No, I didn't speak to anyone from legal aid.
Who did you speak to?
Uh, I spoke to the attorney for the estate.
And who might that be?
Uh, no, I'm not going to get into the estate. No. But you're, you've acknowledged that you've been tendered the deed. So you're the legal owner of that property regardless of the fact that it hasn't been filed by you, which you could at any point.
Well, there hasn't been any, on my end, there hasn't been anything signed and registered and a change of deed. But I will bring up a point about saying yes and saying no. One of the facts is to address this was, and I went to the building department, the building inspector, a year ago, and discussed the fact of building a garage. Because one of these inspectors here said the property warrants, there's plenty of room to put a garage. So there would not be an issue of any outside storage. And at that point, you have to be the owner of the property to execute something like that. I wouldn't be in a, in a situation like this. But the thing is, there's been a question asked, is it in foreclosure? It's not in foreclosure. And it comes at a time, a crossroad, that this is something to go forward in my life. It's only going to, uh, cause, uh, just cause undue expense.
Okay, alright. So we, we have all of the concerns addressed.
And I'd like, I'd like to show you the sheds.
Okay, hand it, hand up the pictures, but we have all of the concerns addressed.
Sure, Virginia. Be careful.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, at this time, I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Close it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Magrino?
Well, again, I, uh, had a resolution prepared for the village, uh, for its consideration, um, which you have before you, uh, of note. You should first be aware as the clauses go through, what I discussed at the beginning in terms of the service of notice and the timing. Um, and if the board is so inclined, again, acting to promote the, uh, good government of the village, the protection of property, safety, health, comfort, general welfare of the inhabitants of the village, and protection of their property, uh, I'm asking the village to consider, uh, pursuant to two oh five six, that the village undertake appropriate action to remedy the condition, removing any litter, garbage, junk, unregistered vehicles, and instituting any other appropriate actions to effect the remediation necessary. That in taking, undertaking the remediation, there'll be charged to the owner of the property at the next bill, tax bill, uh, that the remediation will commence on or after April ninth. So it'll give, uh, a week for, uh, to get started at the very least, and that the mayor would be authorized to take any steps as necessary to enforce. So that's the resolution I have before the board. So I don't know if anybody, any board members have any questions.
Um, do you have, uh, the, of, uh, the personal delivery upon Mr. Anzalmo?
It was...
Twenty-sixth.
February?
No, 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 no. It was February, uh, no, no, no. The original notice, uh, March sixth. Personally, it was served, uh, March sixth, but the code does not require personal service. Uh, that was, Mr. Anzalmo happened to be on the property. Mr. Ortiz, uh, saw him there.
The... So it was delivered by mail?
Mail and posted.
And when?
On the property, uh, February twenty-seventh. It was posted on the property and mailed February twenty-seventh. Um, because it was prepared on the twenty-fourth and posted on the twenty-seventh. Uh, and again, with respect to personal delivery, again, time had gone by, but, uh, Mr. Anzalmo was not living at the property. Uh, but again, in terms of the, um, the requirements of the statute, personal delivery is not required. Uh, I will note since March sixth, it's now April second, and no remedial action is taking place with that. I believe, I believe what the mayor was referring to earlier, there were two actions by the village board previously where it was clean, another action where we were here. So that was three. So this is really the fourth time we're before the board for, uh, some action with respect to that.
Okay. So we formally have a resolution authorizing the Village of Suffolk to undertake to remedy the property maintenance condition at twenty-seven Hillside Drive, Suffolk, whereas pursuing, pursuant to an investigation by the Village of Suffolk Building Department and acting on complaints of residents of the village that was observed on the property located at twenty-seven Hillside Avenue, Suffolk, New York, tax lot section, five four point six zero, block three, lot seven, litter, debris, rubbish, garbage, junk, junk vehicle, and physical hazards on the property. Whereas on or about February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, Randy Ortiz, code enforcement officer of the Village of Suffolk, served the notice to remove violation on last known owners and occupants of the property, namely the estate of Judith Webster, the estate of Mary, Marie Anzalmo, and John Anzalmo, by posting a notice on the property and delivering by mail pursuant to village code section two oh five six A on February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, and by personal delivery upon John Anzalmo on March sixth, twenty eighteen, as owner and or occupant at the present, located at twenty-seven Hillside Avenue, New York, for violation of two oh five three of Suffolk Village Code, notifying the owners and occupants that the property was in violation of the village code with respect to storage of vehicles, litter, debris, garbage, junk, which constitute health and safety and physical hazards, and which notice of violation is annexed hereto and incorporated herein. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Be further reserved that such remediation shall commence on or after April ninth, twenty eighteen, and continue until completed, but no, in no event beyond April thirtieth. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No, we already did that. So, to be clear, you have until April ninth, before the village, until ninth, until the village, uh, undertakes the cleanup.
April ninth, the village will commence cleaning out the property or taking whatever action necessary to remedy the violations. Okay, thank you very much. Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. Uh, just one thing to vote on, and I just got a quick update for you. The update, I was asking for a resolution to accept the resignation of Suffolk Police Dispatcher Sam Myers effective March twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. As I explained at the workshop last week, Sam has been with us the last three years. He took a full-time police job with the City of Philadelphia Police Department. So we are asking for the Board to accept his resignation as of March twenty-second.
We did that, we did that, right?
I did that, alright.
Okay. So we have a resolution accepting the resignation of Suffolk Police Dispatcher Sam Myers effective March twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
Nunk pro tunk.
Nunk pro tunk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. We gave Sam a little friendly advice going down to Philadelphia. We told him to not mention the Giants, to mention the Rangers.
And send the cheese steaks up.
And send the cheese steaks up, exactly. So he's doing good. He did a great, he really did a good job for us, we'll see.
Great.
Uh, just a quick update. We had, in the month of March, six hundred ninety-two police malotters in call for service. We have, our vehicle and traffic summonages are up approximately ten percent at this time from last year. We had thirty-three arrests in March. We are looking to start up our car seat installation program again. We did it for years. Mayor, we did it, and we spoke about this before. And we did this, and we used to have the residents be able to come down, hook up a car seat, as easy as it seems. It's not that easy when you get into the nuts and bolts and the mechanics are properly putting it in. So I think we're going to send an officer to get certified for that.
Hold on, it's like a car.
What's that, Jim?
Hold on.
Infamous tape. Okay, I'm back, alright. So, we feel it's a good, a good service to offer to residents. Uh, you know, some of the, most of the departments around here are not currently doing it. It's a good thing for our residents. People loved it, so we want to get back into it again. So we're going to send an officer, looks like, in May, and I'll keep you informed, um, as you can best on that as well. So. We also want to do a bicycle rodeo in May, and a bicycle rodeo we've done before. We did one last year at RP Counter School, which was good. The issue is, we're getting requests village-wide. Kids are violent and all, kids are not developed on air. So we want to have a village-wide one. I've already had people reach out that'll repair the bikes, that'll donate bike helmets, uh, will teach bike safety, have a barbie cart. I think it's a great thing, safety community for the kids in the village, and I'll probably use the ball field a lot. And, uh, Mayor, Jim, we talked about this a while ago. We did one years back, and it really went over well. We haven't done one on our own. It's always been through the schools. But the departments will have it at one school. Kids from other schools don't go there. I think a village-wide one is, is necessary. Looking to do it mid-May. I'll keep you informed with the date. Our communication room downstairs, thanks, thank you, Mayor and Board, is basically to take us into the future. Sergeant Gina Tino and Dispatcher Jeremy Coffer oversaw the project. We have all new dispatch equipment, basically necessary emergency equipment to take us into the next, future, I should say, the next several years, um, into the future, with updated equipment for safety of everyone. And the last thing, as I know you mentioned before, but the storms, we got absolutely pounded. But there's no reason, particularly the one where we were backed up thirty-five, forty calls in a clip. I want to thank Charles's guys, BPW, the fire department, was responding calls, and Kathy and everybody stepped up to the plate and helped us out. And thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So going back to the comm room, and that full update of the comm room does look great. Also, we updated the, um, surveillance system throughout Village Hall with new cameras and recording equipment. Um, so it's really, they're doing a great job down there. Thank you, Sergeant Gina Tino, and, uh, Dispatcher Coffer for really taking the lead on it. You guys did a great job. Thank you. Okay, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, the Village Board. So a few things that we have coming up. Um, if you'll notice, for upcoming events, we have a lot of wellness programs coming up, and this is our new program that we're doing, the Mayor's Wellness Program. Nancy Christopher from Recreation is doing a fantastic job reaching out to people, reaching out to speakers, reaching out to groups that can come in. So you'll see the upcoming events here. We have a lot of great things coming up for residents as well as for employees. So we're really trying to bulk that up. So if there's any questions or any comments or any input you want to give for the Mayor's Wellness Program, Mayor, we always, we love working with this. We think it's a great program that is really coming about.
Again, a lot of good feedback on it, and the communication through constant contact and utilizing Facebook, and so that's something that we continue to focus on.
Yep.
And opening it up to all residents.
Yep.
You know, which is, which is really working out well.
Exactly.
So really, thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job up there.
Thank you very much. Uh, so the first thing that we have, the walking club is beginning this Wednesday. Uh, people can meet here at Village Hall. We start from Village Hall. People can meet here at Village Hall, we start from Village Hall, go around the loop. For those people that don't, haven't seen the signs, they're all along Washington, orange, Lafayette, and back to Washington again.
And keep in mind, I'm jumping in on you, but keep in mind with the signs, the walking path or loop, what we call it, was in part by the county, Rockland County, and Good Samaritan Hospital, and the Village of Suffering, so that really did work out well for us, too.
And there's no cost to us, once the signs were up, which we didn't even purchase, it's there, people get to walk for free.
Right, all we did was put the signs, post the signs.
Correct.
Right.
So the first one will be this Wednesday, we're going to do mornings first and then evenings, so Wednesday mornings at 10:00 a.m., April 4th, 11th, 18th, and the 25th, and again Nancy will be walking with everybody, I might be able to get out there, too. Anyone else that's encouraged to walk with us, please do. Wednesday evenings then, those will be at 6:00 p.m., that will be May 2nd, 9th, 16th, and the 23rd, again, meet here at Village Hall. The Nutrition Workshop, we have once a month in the mornings, we're going to be continuing with those in the evenings coming up. The Nutrition Workshop will be this Tuesday, April 3rd, at 10:30, and again Nancy's doing a great job, she's getting speakers to come in, we had Shopright and Sarah come in last meeting, and it was a big hit. And this again was open to seniors originally, it's open to the public, and we're getting great feedback with that. Artie Time is on this month, April 5th and the 19th. We have next Wednesday, April 11th, Clifford Theater, we're going to have the auditorium open, we're going to reveal the show. Some of you might know what it is, nobody else really knows what it is, we're really excited for it. Clifford Theater is becoming bigger and bigger every year, and it's a fantastic program. It's open to kids that are going into 6th grade, up to 12th grade in the district, and it's a really great program, so we're proud to have that on the 11th.
And that's also funded through a lot of grant money and donations also, keep that in mind, and it's a good opportunity for the youth to be exposed to theater.
Right, and we use this beautiful auditorium for the program, and it's a wonderful opportunity for us. Lifeguards, believe it or not, we are talking about summer already, on Tuesday, April 10th, and that should be Thursday, April 12th, Nancy and I will be interviewing lifeguards in the office. We've started doing phone interviews with any guards that are away of college, that they're looking to come back, so we're looking to get that started for the year. We have two headguards chosen for the year, Sean Hagerty and Peter Oliveto, we're looking to have them come back as headguards this year, so we're looking forward to that. The Little League Parade will be on Saturday, April 14th, at 9:30 a.m., starting here at Village Hall, going down Lafayette into the ballfields. On April 14th as well, we'll be seeing Broadway, we're going to see Hello Dolly, we've had that discussion a couple of times, but it's on Saturday, the 14th. The Suffering Street Fair will be Sunday, April 15th, and that's from 10 to 5, and then the Beer Garden will be at 10 to 7. Again, one of our programs, Lunch and Learn, we're going to do on Wednesday, April 18th, and that will be in the community room, and we have a speaker coming in, and again Nancy looked into groups that take the village insurance, so any employees that attend will be able to use these services going forward, so we're really, she's doing a lot of research on it, so we're really, really trying to do the right thing for everybody. On April 21st, we're going to have, we're going to host the Wise Beginnings, they're going to have a craft fair at the Community Center. On April 22nd, there's going to be a dog event at Yorkshire Park, I believe that's on the agenda for you to talk about later. A movie at the Community Center, again, is open to everybody, previously was open to seniors, but we're opening it up to everyone. It will be The Greatest Showman, the story about the Ringling Brothers, that will be at April 26th at 12:30. And then Keep Rockin' Beautiful, which is one of the events that I really love, having residents and people in the community come in, and we clean up the village, we help anything that we can, go out to different community areas, we have Boy Scouts, we have Girl Scouts, we've got residents that just come by and help us, so that's on Saturday, April 28th, and that will be from 9 to 12, meeting at the Community Center. And then the discussion that I have on the list here is the Wellness Training. Nancy and I will be going to the Rockland County Fire Training Center on April 24th, there is no charge, and we'd like to get permission to attend that training.
Okay, so I have the resolution here, it's for, let's see, Nancy Christopher and Kathy Mills to attend the Rockland County Wellness Coordinator Training at the Rockland County Fire Training Center, April 24th, 2018, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., at no cost to the village. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. And one other thing that I have on, I don't have it on the agenda, the calendar, the annual calendar that we put out, we're working on that, it's looking fantastic. Mayor, perhaps we can sit down this week, I'll show you the draft.
Okay.
It's looking fantastic, we're really forging ahead of it.
Great, great, great.
And then update, I see on the agenda, the agenda has Suffering Little League Athletic Fields Permit, an opening parade, again, the parade will be April 14th, and then, I don't know, to talk about the...
The permitting application, we're continuing to work on, actually have a temporary permit in place, we received their insurance, so yeah, everything's moving forward.
Yep.
Great, thank you for orchestrating all of that.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Grant Reiter, Mr. Fred Rela.
Before you do that, we have a resolution.
Go ahead, Mr. Rela.
The tip-off tonight time is 9:20.
9:20.
Fast but also accurate.
One hour fifteen minutes.
I just have a couple items. Kathy Mills, who runs the Clifford Theater, they were in need of some funds, so we worked with Chief Osborne, Kathy, Ellen Jaffe's office in the Division of Criminal Justice Services, we had a $7,000 grant for Dare, we pulled $2,000 from that, and we built it into Clifford Theater, such that now that can cover some expenses, such as the play director, musical expenses, you actually pay for the musical scoring, so that would be a big clinical. Arbor Day.
Yes.
Arbor Day is always the last Friday in April, that is April 27th. We celebrate Arbor Day here within the municipality on April 28th, which is, and we're going to do something over in Yorkshire Park, which is for us, for the Dare Hockey Ring, same place that we celebrated it last year, we planted some eastern redbud trees, and we're going to continue that to sort of fulfill the tree needs of that park, and I'm looking to profit on that as well. We're going to have the Girl Scouts there, and a little ceremony, and before you, you have a proclamation for Arbor Day, that is one of the requirements of the Tree City USA designation, and so I would need you to sign that, Mayor.
Okay, I have that here, and I have the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the 2018 Arbor Day proclamation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Just one final thing, I did go up to Albany this past Thursday, basically representing the village in acknowledgement of our Tree City designation for the fifth year in a row. There was a ceremony for all the Tree Cities throughout the state, so you'll be receiving a packet in the mail, Mayor, and that will include the Tree City flag and a lot, so once you get that, you can give it off to Kathy or to myself, and we use it for celebrations of Arbor Day.
Perfect, yep, will do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to audience participation. If you'd like to speak, come up and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Board, Paul Gerard, Two Cross Street. I know we're having the budget hearing next week, so I don't want to dive into that at all, but I do have a comment in the agenda that had concerned me, and I just wanted to make a few points on it. It says under, you know, for next week's hearing on the budget, that we want to consider a local law to exceed the real property tax levy limit, and I have some real concerns about that. You know, I want, most importantly, I want you to consider what Suffering taxpayers have been enduring over the last few years. Number one, the town of Ramapo has increased taxes 62% over the last three years. Okay, we had a 16% tax increase in '16, an 11.6% increase in '17, and they just increased taxes in '18, 24.9%, okay? So that works out to 62% over three years. As far as Suffering residents go, you are the only government body that could help alleviate the residence of this tax burden, and that goes back to considering separating ourselves from Ramapo. But up till now, you choose not to take action on that, or explore the notion of separating from town, so I know we did a study with West Point.
What was the question regarding the tax levy that you had, you had a concern about that? What was that?
I have concerns about us considering us to exceed the real property tax limit that we have set.
We do do that every year.
I'm sorry?
I question that, we do do that every year.
Okay. I think I pretty much come up every year and express my concerns about that. Every year, so far, what ended up happening, you know, is we not exceed the tax cap, but we ended up adopting a resolution from the City Police Department.
With what?
With the resolution that we're talking about, okay? After what was it about? Okay. Meaning, for two, three years, we're not exceeding, right, we don't, the Board adopted the local law to allow that to exceed.
If necessary. Maybe Mike, you can clarify that, the tax levy cap.
The New York Conference of Mayors strongly recommends that you adopt the tax levy cap legislation to exceed it, because especially in the very beginning, when we were dealing with the tax cap, very few people were familiar with how it would work and how the different calculations might impact the levy of the taxes, and if you didn't adopt it and you exceeded the tax cap, then you would be in trouble, because then you had to take some of that tax money, set it aside, and you really didn't have enough money theoretically through the year to operate. So we do adopt it, but the fact of the matter is, and you can't correct, we were actually below the tax levy cap a couple of years, in fact, this year, we're entitled to bring over $40,000 from the excess that we were below the cap. So this is a tentative budget, as you know, of all, so anything can happen between now and then, between now and the time it's adopted, but the fact of the matter is, I'm sure the Board is going to work very hard to get it below the tax cap that they've done in the past.
Expression is the better part of that, having it as a tool, a toolbox, just in case, but to pass this rule, hopefully, maybe during the same time, that's the best we can do. No, hopefully that's the case, but I do want to take my opportunity to express opinion from a resident's point of view. And so I'm going to continue, if you don't mind. So that's the first point, is to be aware of that tax burden that we've been experiencing. The other thing I think it's important to note is that, starting this year in 2018, none of this property tax is going to be deductible any longer for most families that own homes in Suffering. There's basically a $10,000 cap imposed on federal taxes starting this year, that has to cover state income taxes and local property taxes. And although the narrative, the national narrative, is that this tax law is favorable for most people, if you live in a tax, I'm sorry, if you live in a state like New York, like New Jersey, like California, where you've got higher property taxes than the national average, and you have a state income tax, that $10,000 will, you know, in most cases, exceed what you already pay in state income taxes, therefore your property taxes cannot be deducted. So I just remind the Board to be, you know, even more prudent as these years come, because there's a lot of people that are going to be very upset with this tax law after they do their taxes next year, and it's a threat to villages like ours in states like New York, and New Jersey, and the other ones that I mentioned, because it just becomes cost prohibitive. And I think we are seeing a lot of examples of where, you know, there is some...
I think it would be well worth your effort to perhaps make that concern to the state legislature, somebody who has more control over the tax bill in its entirety than the village tax. Have you voiced your concern with the town and county and state?
Yeah, there's a, like I said, there's an income tax.
Have you voiced that concern to them, since they are the biggest brunt of the tax bill that's presented to us all every year?
Yeah, I have expressed my concern to the governor with the state, but also, the guy with most impact here, I'm able to talk to you folks in person, I'm sorry, Ms. Hertzman, if you're not interested in what I have to say, but I'm going to continue to address this Board with my concerns. I don't, to be fair, I don't touch what you're saying at all. Okay. So, so, these are two dynamics I just think you need to be aware of. You know, the other thing that I've noticed, and I brought it up last year's, last year's budget hearing, is that we've endured, we've actually experienced some surpluses in 2016 to the tune of 1.4 million, and that's something I brought up here last year, and I brought it to the attention of Mr. Giannino when he confirmed that my calculations were accurate. I did that again with the 2017 figures that just came out as part of the budget, and there's, we're showing a $700,000 surplus in 2017. I would encourage the Board, where we see some cost increases as we, you know, run the different departments in the village, to begin to utilize some of those surpluses to fund any overheads and keep our taxes flat. It's an awful lot of money for, and it's helped us get into a healthier position, but, you know, I find it, quite frankly, irresponsible if we're going to continue to put contingent, build contingencies into our budgets when we are sitting on these surpluses from the last two years. Okay, so, that's all I had to say on that point. The other question I wanted to ask is, have we had any progress on the vacant trustee position?
Yes, continuing for interview.
Okay.
I had my last interview on Wednesday.
Okay. Am I ever going to get any feedback from you, whether or not...
When I finish the process, yes, when I complete the process.
I see, okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
How we doing, guys, everyone today? Michael Curly, Haiti, Florence Avenue, Suffering, New York. I guess it's just, I'll keep it as short and sweet as I know how to. This is on the table and chairs, on the applications and stuff. If I look at number 11 here, it appears the village is going to cost me a lot of money, otherwise I might get sued, because if the mayor comes and Clark comes and sits in the outside with the sun, now I'm not allowed umbrellas, I could get sued, so I would consider maybe if you read that one over, and you let people put umbrellas out there. Number 11, it says no umbrellas, that's just a consideration. So I was thinking about you, Mayor, too, Clark, all right?
Thank you.
But I said that, all right, so, if we could do that point, maybe, okay?
Okay.
Now, you know, when I applied for my liquor license, I actually had put in, you know, drawings to Liquor Authority, you know, with the tables and chairs outside. uh, you know, drawings to Liquor Authority, you know, with the tables and chairs outside, um, you know what it is, and the village also got notice that I was doing the lice and things. But now it appears you're, uh, and again, it's a, it's a new law, I recognize that, okay? So I, it's a learning process, for me anyway, maybe not for you folks, okay? But if you look at, uh, number, on, uh, on number 13, it says you can't have more than eight people out there. So the problem is, if you guys come and I got eight people sitting there, you guys can't sit out there, all right? Now, for the last years, I've had permission from the village and from the state Liquor Authority to have 10 tables, but you've restricted that now to two tables. I don't, and, and if you go back to past practices, you'll see I've never had a problem out there with them at all, all right? So you just could look at that one.
So you're saying the umbrellas and the number of tables?
Well, if the umbrellas, if you go anywhere out the country, you'll, you'll notice umbrellas is part of the thing, unless there's a reason why they can't, but people, especially elderly people, they, they, they need umbrellas to, to stay. So if you could just look at that, and, and the other point I gave you there was the, it's only a lot of eight people, right? I've had, if you look at the...
Amy, uh, Mike, Mr. Curly, let, Amy, do you have a comment on that?
My recommendation that we, um, for number 11 and number 13 are any of the ones where, um, I can see your point, we give the size of the area, you can have the two or three chairs, and include it from us, otherwise we provide four.
Okay, whoever, whoever, I'm just making my comments, whatever you do, I respect, all right? But, uh, I, I don't, you know, so that's just the two, and then, uh, uh, on number 18, I'm allowed to have up to a, a four, a four-foot size menu. I don't, I think that's a little bit odd, I don't think you need a four-foot side menu, all right? If you read the thing there, so, I would, I'd make that a little less on that, okay? Now, I already have tables that I put out there that are, I, I assume the intention was to make it a four-by-four square table, huh? Not the menus. So I already had tables that I put out there, what I call family-style tables, because some families are, you know, are bigger than that, and it's comfortable for families, and I, I kind of like to serve families, so if you could, you consider that. If, if a space doesn't afford it, I recognize and I respect it, right? But, uh, you know, my space, and maybe other spaces also do, all right? So, and again, if you could just look at that also. And then on, on number, uh, number three, uh, and again, I'm going by past practices, what we've done while most of you have been in office, okay? Um, and, and I'll even go, you put a restriction from the time, okay? Now, I serve food till, till later at night than most, okay? And some people open earlier than these, and, and I'll point out me, it's all right? And it's, it's a nice place for the village, and he, he opens up earlier, but you're, you're saying he can only start at a 10. I would consider you, you start that early, okay? And if someone else has their kitchen open later than you, you put 12, hey, their kitchen open, and there's never been, if there's a problem, you have the power to always restrict it anyway, okay? If there's no problem, I think it should be an, an open time if they're still serving food, all right? For anyone, that's not just for me, all right? Again, if there's a problem, you're going to put the kibosh on, all right? So I, I just think, I, I think, like, for me, anyway, when I go and back up in the season, there's, there's a two to four thousand dollar cost for me, for me personally, just to make it nice, to fix it, you know what I mean? You know, and why? Like, like we talked about planners and different things, you want people to put out planners, you know? But there's not, that's not, that's not as cheap as it may seem, you know what I mean? And these are not the ones my girlfriend buys, all right? You know, it's, it's, and it's to make it nicer and, and make it more appealing to the village, all right? That's it, I have to get back to work, and thank you for your time, all right?
Thank you very much. We will take all your comments into consideration. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? At this time, I'm closing audience participation. Next up is the village clerk.
Mr. Bush.
Keep them coming. Do you have them?
Oh, I have them. I don't even...
Okay, I have a resolution authorizing Stacy Maza Scollo, Scollo, to hold a block party June 9th, 2018 at Donna Halid Park from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, I have a motion, a resolution authorizing the village clerk to accept the annual bids for the Suffering Memorial Pool Concession Stand on April 19th at 3:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, I have a resolution establishing the village's suffering parking permit fees for June 1st through May 31st, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes. Next, I have a resolution establishing a limit of three-hour free parking in business district municipal lots A, B, C, and D. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think, uh, is it three, one hour free parking or...
Three hours.
Three hours.
Three hours.
Establishing a limit of three hours, okay. Right, after three hours, you have to, you have to, you have to...
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution approving timesheet for North State Council Office requirements for Vincent Attell.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Resolution approving a timesheet for Village Justice Ernest Bonacor for the hours worked through the months of November 10th, 2017 through February 9th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Resolution authorizing timesheet for the, uh, New York State Council Office representing, uh, Mike Janito.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Resolution authorizing timesheet for Robert McGreen.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Motion.
All right, motion passes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Resolution approving timesheet for Amy Appen-Gorman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Approving timesheet for New York State Council Office for Joseph Ruta.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Russell Houston.
Yes.
One, two, three, four. Department of Public Works, Mr. Zawicki.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am requesting the board to accept the resignation of Donald Toscano, effective March 15th, 2018.
I have a resolution accepting the resignation of Donald Toscano Jr. as chief operator, grade four wastewater treatment plant effective March 15th, whereas Donald Toscano Jr. submitted a letter of resignation dated March 15th, 2018 to Charles Zawicki, Director of Public Works. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffering hereby accepts the resignation of Donald Toscano Jr. as chief operator, grade four wastewater, effective March 15th, 2018.
Dunk pro tunk.
Dunk pro tunk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
I am re, uh, requesting payment authorization for application for payment number four for Hauser Brothers Inc. for the wastewater treatment plant digester boiler replacement project in the amount of $70,467.68.
So I have, uh, authori, I have the resolution authorizing the payment number four to Hauser Brothers Inc. for the wastewater treat, treatment plant digester boiler project.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike, do we have the, Mr. Janito, do we have the funds available to, for the payment? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to award the zinc and copper investigative study, uh, professional service to the low, lowest proposal from Pitt and Garrow and DeWeach Consulting Engineers, PC, Middletown, New York, in the amount of $11,500.
Do I have the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the lowest bid proposal for the zinc copper investigative study for professional services? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to award the, uh, Water Department Chemical bids. There's, uh, we, our three chemicals that we solicited bids for, uh, liquid sodium hydro, hy, hy, hypochlorite solution to the low bidder Maine Pool and Chemical Company, Dupont, Pennsylvania.
Do I have a, we're going to do one individually, each one individually?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a mo, uh, resolution authorizing the acceptance of the lowest bid for liquid sodium hypochlorite solution? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, um, the next, um, is 25% sodium hydroxide.
Okay, I have a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the lowest bid for 25% sodium hydroxide at 95 cents per gallon. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
The next chemical is zinc orthophosphate.
Okay, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the lowest bid for zinc orthophosphate at a cost of $8.23 per gallon from George S. Cone Chemical. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to establish a public hearing, uh, to be held on May 7th, 2018 at 7:05 PM, um, for the acceptance of the annual New York State VEC MS4 report.
So I'd like to set a, I have a resolution setting a public hearing on Monday, May 7th, 2018 at 7:05 PM. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
I re, I am requesting authorization to attend the powers and duties of local highway official workshop in Middletown, New York on April 3rd, 2018, at a cost of $50.
I have a resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to attend the power and duties for highway officials training April 3rd, 2018 in Middletown. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization for Stanley Dubrinsky and Steve Cardieres to attend the Hudson Valley Water Work Seminar in Montgomery, New York on April 11th, 2018, at a cost of $30 each.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I have a couple pro, some projects here, just want to update, um, the digester boiler replacement project, uh, startup, um, of the, um, boilers, or is currently, um, in progress, and, and we should be, uh, we have some training scheduled this week.
Are they running?
Well, they're currently running on, on the natural gas. We have to, we have to, uh, calibrate them, so we start off with the natural gas, and then we go to the bio.
Did we disconnect the temporary boil, boilers?
The temporary is still there, um, and it's there only as a backup.
Okay.
It's a redundant, uh, system as a backup, but currently we run off the natural gas. And then with, uh, as I mentioned, Wednesday, we have some training, and we're going to kick into the bio gas, and it should happen this week.
Great, okay.
Um, update for the, uh, the drain, currently we have a short-term repair in place that's, uh, that's holding, um, long-term options are being reviewed. The, um, update, uh, on the, um, $5.5 million plug flow modification project, the final design will be, uh, submitted to the, uh, New York State D E C, uh, at the end of this month for, um, review and approval. And, um, shortly thereafter, so it'll be, uh, next month, um, well, let's see, it generally takes, uh, 45 days or more for the D E C to review the, the documents.
So the D E C has to review the, the, um, final design?
Right, right, right.
Okay. And they take up to 45 days?
Yes, and, um, if there's any, uh, if they have any comments, we'll incorporate those comments and then submit it for re, uh, re-review and approval.
Okay.
Okay, um, the Phase 2 Santeri Sewer Abeyment, um, project, an engineering report will be submitted, uh, to the New York State D E C for their review and approval, um, during the month of June.
In June. Okay.
And, um, the, um, kosher, uh, this is the New York Rising, New York State Program that, um, Suffering was fortunate enough to, uh, receive a $3 million grant, and, um, those, um, projects are being finalized, the 100% design drawings, uh, are scheduled to be complete this month. Uh, that includes the MCC, the Motor Control Center, at the wastewater treatment plant, um, the elevation and reconstruction of wellhouse 2 and 4, and Village Hall and DPW Garage, your mercy generated. Uh, the resurfacing reimbursement, um, most recently, we received CHIPS funds of, in the neighborhood of these, uh, 300, uh, $301,000 plus or minus, uh, dollars from CHIPS reimbursement for work that was done last fall, and in addition, uh, around $26,000 from the, uh, extreme weather conditions, which is another font associated with CHIPS.
I agree. Everybody have any questions?
No. I was just, uh, there's been, uh, due to all the recent storms and the extreme amount of branches and trees and such that have landed everywhere, um, I, I think a lot of people are confused about, um, one, whose responsibility it is to pick it up? If the homeowner does go out and do yard cleanup, um, when and under what circumstances would the DPW pick it up? Does it need to be bundled as a, like, the garbage, the recyclers, called pickup? Um, and I was just wondering if perhaps you could prepare something that we could send out for constant contact, or the Facebook page, uh, website, just to provide clarification? Because as many people that have cleaned up, there's still tons of people that haven't really gotten an opportunity to do that, but it's common.
Yeah, sir, we could do that, we could, uh, we could do that tomorrow.
Well, based on, also on the clarity of whose responsibility is it to pick up fallen limbs or debris or whatever on, on private property that we've encountered, is it the responsibility to DPW to do that?
No, we won't go on private property.
Right.
Obviously, the private ways, uh, typically it's 10 feet in from the curb line.
Right.
In most cases.
And that's where usually the, the homeowner or the business will, if it's not a business, I'm saying the homeowner will put their debris, their branches, their bags, their garbage.
Yeah, and ideally, we'd like to have them cut up into four-foot lengths, if they could be bundled and tied, that'd be, uh, saves us a lot of time.
I think if we could provide that clarification so that people know what to do with, I think you will just overwhelm the amount of stuff that's falling onto the properties, I don't think we've got a special for that.
We do that, sure.
I think they did a great job, the guys picking up all of the, all of the sticks and branches and...
Yeah, there was, uh... Yeah, there was just, I quite honestly, I remember a time, there was that much limbs and vegetative debris.
I don't even think it was this bad after, after Sandy.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a lot.
Yeah, I would agree with that, yeah.
Let me tell you, all the residents that I've encountered, every day I encounter so many residents, and they just say, and this goes to you, Joe, in the back also, of the guys on the trucks, picking up the garbage from, picking up the garbage, picking up all the debris, and plowing the snow. I mean, I'm telling you, they rave about the department.
Yeah, they do a good job, really.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a lot going on.
Yeah, sure is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janito.
Mayor, the first thing I have is a resolution that would authorize me to attend a National Government Finance Officers Association Conference, May 5th to 9th, 2018.
Okay, so I have that resolution authorizing Michael Janito to attend the governmental, Government Financial Officers Association Annual Conference, May 5th through May 9th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The other item on the agenda is the Smart Lock Program, and essentially that was replacing most of the lights in Village Hall, including Police Department, with LED lights. The only lighting that was not replaced were the lights in this auditorium, which they're very special lights and they have to have a special treatment to them, as well as that in the museum, they're the same lights as the previous ones. But at any rate, they did a wonderful job, even on the outside of the building, you can see that at night, that the LED lighting is quite better, and quite much better than the lights that were there. And we anticipate a very short payback period, meaning the savings from the electricity will pay back itself within ten months. So that should be nice. We also, unfortunately, they've put this program on hold. We had them starting to work on other buildings, the sewer plant, the water plant, the garage, the firehouses, but before they could even start their work, the program was put on hold. We're hoping at some point in the near future, they may bring it back, because it was a nice incentive to get this to the village, to get it done financially, and as well, again, it has that very short payback period, and serves the environment well, serves your eyesight well, and so forth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Do you know why?
No, I don't. Basically, the program was managed by Orange Rockland, and for whatever reason that it was. Hopefully, it'll get restarted. And just other couple notes that's not on the agenda here, but we have been participating in the Rockland County Shared Services slash Consolidation discussions, and they had some very promising issues that they brought forth in the purchasing group, which allows the village to participate in the purchasing through the county, not only as a piggyback, meaning that you can participate in buying, but actually offering up the products that you would typically buy during a year, and they can add that to the county's bid when it goes out and get even better pricing. Likewise, there was one very recently on sewer services, and that's all of the sewer districts, you know, Rockland County has its own sewer plant, Orange Town does, we do, there's a number of others, but basically getting that together.
It's a new tape recorder, a cassette recorder that we're using now, and we're really familiarizing ourselves with it.
Is that reel-to-reel?
Not reel-to-reel, but, well, it is reel-to-reel tape, it is. The more modern reel-to-reel. Good? I think we're good.
Okay, and lastly, the other thing that we signed up for with the county to participate in is LED street lighting program that the county is coordinating, and actually has a consortium of towns and villages together right now, where they're getting some purchasing benefits from that. So we're looking at participating in that as well.
All those shared services, purchasing, the sewer consolidation, LED street lighting is all to benefit the taxpayer and the public, and it's a mandate from the governor's office, from Governor Cuomo's office, and they charged, the governor charged each county executive with forming committees and exploring all these money save, cost-saving possibilities. So it's great, the LED lighting was, you know, for the Village Hall was great for us. And we'll continue to pursue the other shared services. And thank you for all the help in the budget. I know that we've been reviewing the budget and working towards an ultimate goal, which we all want to hear, is lower taxes. So thank you very much, Mike.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Village Attorney.
First, I was, uh-
Mr. Magrino, that's what it is. Authorizing, I'm gonna show you, special use permit for outdoor tables and chairs.
Uh, yes, good evening, again, is there such a thing as a new cassette tape recorder? I didn't know that there was.
There is a newer version, yes.
Um, with respect to the resolution for a special use permit for outdoor tables and chairs, I know that Amy has worked, did about ninety-five percent of the work on that. The mayor, I guess, the other four, and then me, this last one percent, but-
All right, thank you.
Maybe it was a little more split up between the two of you, but I just really put the resolution together, and in tidying it up, I felt that it would be best to present to the board this, a permit that would permit outdoor tables and chairs and the outdoor planters on a permit basis from the village clerk, but really only just on a temporary basis, really for this year, kind of as a trial period, so to speak, to see how it works. You know, the particulars are in there. We saw a business owner brought up some points, which, you know, certainly were good for his business, but not necessarily a business, you know, closer to Village Hall, um, not yet, those might, you know, there's more of a size, I'm sorry, a space constraint. So, but that's something for the board to consider, but we put this up basically as a resolution, because Section 235 of the Village Code prevents obstructions. This is basically indicating that for the time being, you're authorizing permits under the terms and conditions that are set forth therein, and frankly, I'll leave it to the mayor and Amy to discuss the particulars, but that's, that's the gist of that with respect to the special permit for tables, to outdoor tables.
Okay, so the concerns that were brought up by one of the business owners that spoke earlier, has some concerns to me also. I guess every business owner's needs and timeframes and table sizes should be considered. How can we go about addressing certain concerns?
Well, you know, the umbrella issue, again, I, when I was picturing this in my head, I really was thinking more of the places closer to Village Hall, which-
Right.
-a little tighter. You know, that's your call in terms of umbrellas, you know, that could be part of the, if somebody has a drawing and it shows umbrellas, and it looks like it'd be too much, or it looks like other people in the head, you can say, no umbrellas, something along those lines. With respect to, as Amy pointed out, not to exceed eight people, if it were, you have to come to the board and recognize it, maybe a cumbersome process, but, you know, it'd be something, maybe just even a letter request, asking if it could go. But again, I leave that to the board's discretion in terms of, you want to make it eight, and then they come, you want to make it twelve, and they have to come, and that's really-
So we're talking about the time, I believe it was the time, timeframe, the umbrellas, the number of people, I think there was one other.
The time's a policy issue, I mean, the midnight, it might get noise issues.
The size of-
The size of-
The menu size, not, I tried something else.
So the menu size.
Yeah, that wasn't on the latest version, correct?
Menu size out.
It was eleven thirteen twenty two.
What's your eighteen?
Eleven thirteen twenty three, and grade were the-
Which was eighteen?
Eighteen was the size of the menu sign, which is now out.
Right, that's not the eighteen I had.
Table lighting.
The eighteen I had says table.
Yeah.
I think there's an updated one.
Okay.
So I think it was already addressed.
So how would we go about? Putting forward the resolution without the changes to the-
Well, I, the resolution references the special permit provision, so if you want to make a change, we can make it to that, if it just proceeds. I was gonna make one change on the resolution, as support therein, and substantially perform a next tier two, so it could be some minor changes, but I don't know what changes you want to make, or we're interested in making with respect to eleven and umbrellas. You want to take the pulse of the board on that, you can take that out and just make it as part of what you look at, when, or that the clerk looks at when an application comes in.
All right, so we can review this, address it on the ninth, and it's effective to April 15th.
We can do that, if you want to put it over.
We'll hold it over and have the board make comment and review based upon the public comment.
That's fine.
Board, good?
Good.
Okay, perfect.
Just on the tables and chairs?
Right, we have to make a couple of revisions.
Sorry, well, the next one was also, but based on our discussion before, with respect to the live entertainment. About setting a hearing for that, there's really no, there's nothing proposed, I don't, and we can meet on that. Right now, there is a provision in there for live entertainment in the CB and GB districts, it's a special permit, and there's a process you have to go through, it is a little bit cumbersome, but there is a process there. So to change that, we have to amend the law, take a little more time.
Okay, so we're gonna have to have further discussion on that?
Yeah. And it also has to be sent out for the DM. Right, has to go for the whole, and again, I, substantively, I don't know if the board wants to remove that as a special permit, wants to tweak it as a special permit, and again, that's, I think, something we can discuss offline before we go ahead further.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Handwritten resolution, so I'll read it. A resolution authorizing the village attorney to represent the village of Suffolk in the matter of covenant holdings versus DeTano for Geon F G E T J Inc. and the village of Suffolk, whereas the village of Suffolk has been made as a defendant in the above matter, whereas the village must be defended, now therefore be resolved or to trustee to the village of Suffolk, therefore it authorizes the village attorney Daniel Krasch to represent the village in the above caption. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Moving to the next, um, I have to check on the notice requirements, but we have an agreement in principle, finally, with Cable Vision Altice for a new franchise agreement. State law requires that a public hearing be held prior to the acceptance of the board and new authorization by the board for the mayor to execute the agreement. I do not have a hard copy of that agreement yet, but I don't think it would hurt, even if we have to continue the public hearing, to set it for April 16th at 7:30 PM for a public hearing on the franchise renewal with Cable Vision slash Altice.
What time did you say?
Seven thirty.
Have a motion? Set the public hearing April 16th at 7:30.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. It's April 16th, 7:30.
Okay, um, next resolution, um, will link's, make sure that it's in order. Okay, um, authorization for the suspension of employee number 11043 without pay for thirty days, and for the mayor to sign the memorandum to employee number 11043 notifying of singing.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion, discussion.
Discussion.
This is a suspension for thirty days without pay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, I have a resolution authorizing the hiring of Kenneth Bernstein as hearing officer against employee number 11043 pursuant to Section 75 of the Civil Service Law. And he's to be compensated and rate not to exceed one-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per hour for services rendered. Do I have a motion?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Um, and a resolution authorizing the adoption of charges and specifications against employee number 11043, recognizing that board members have been provided a copy of these charges and specifications, and have had an opportunity to refuse them, and that doing so did not make any determination or findings.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, um, a draft of a proposed memorandum of understanding and revocable non-exclusive license agreement was forwarded to Mr. Barry Dean, as president of the Little League, and wants to make some revisions. I think this is going to require another sit-down to hash out, but for the most part, I think the majority of things have been agreed to in principle, but until it's resolved completely, I don't think we need to have the board review it where it stands right now. With regard to the village of Hillburn, we've been in contact with, this has to do with illegal dumping. A lawsuit was brought by, first off, I'm not gonna belabor the one, but the village of Hillburn determined that illegal dumping of fill, maybe the C and D construction, construction degree, was occurring on property located in the village- D construction, construction, um, was occurring on property located in the village. Uh, at some point, they issued, uh, a violation with a stop court order, um, that appears to have been ignored, um, they did not apply to the zoning board to appeal the determination, um, that period of time appears to have run out. Uh, Hillburn brought an action that's now pending, uh, in Supreme Court, um, it was, uh, transferred to another judge and, um, what they're seeking is a judicial determination, uh, to have them, uh, stop, uh, dumping. Uh, additionally, I was, uh, in contact with, uh, members of, uh, the county drainage agency. Uh, I was advised Friday that they would be bringing their own litigation, um, sometime this week, um, there are, uh, different violations relating to, uh, county law, uh, and dumping. Uh, the concern for the village of Suffering is that, uh, this, uh, is in an area that could easily, um, um, migrate, uh, into the Ramapo River and potentially, uh, affect, uh, well fields. Um, so, uh, I spoke with, uh, uh, someone from, uh, the county and at this juncture, I think what they want from us is an affidavit, uh, from Charles, uh, this is the first time that Charles is hearing this. Charles, you there? Okay. Um, uh, but we may, uh, end up getting further involved, um, depending on how, uh, it progresses within the court system on those, uh, soon to be two cases, so that's enough. Um, I have some questions, but if I can answer, I'll answer them, if I can't, I'll reflect them to Charles.
Okay. No questions. Trustee update.
Do you have anything yet? Yes. I have a, uh, meeting on Thursday morning at ten AM at the Cape Town New York State DOT, discuss a, uh, related community, uh, in Washington, and, uh, Market Avenue. This was, uh, originally supposed to be completed in the spring as part of the fifty-nine corridor project, um, and, uh, when it, when I did, the contract was way too hot, so then we forced up the contract, thought of what was, if the lead, and now we have to be the mayor myself to, uh, discuss how we can get this, uh, completed, will be the case in Thursday at ten AM.
That's Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
All right, I have in front of me a, an application to, uh, have a private event at Yorkshire Park on April twenty-second. It's from Rough Cuts Pet Grooming. They submitted an event application to hold a charity fundraiser called Rolie's Paw Print on Sunday, twenty-two April at Yorkshire Drive Park across from Neil Light. Every dollar raised from this event is used to help local families who need financial assistance with veterinary care for their pets. Over the past five years, Rough Cuts has raised money through charity events for this cause. Rough Cuts partners with Dr. Ness of Airmont Animal Hospital, who generously donates his time to help get the most out of every dollar in an effort to help as many families as possible. To date, Rough Cuts has helped a hundred and ten families, some who are struggling with illness or death in the family, some are seniors, some lost their homes to flooding or fire, some are not able to work due to a sick child, there's many, many circumstances. I am therefore requesting the board to approve Rough Cuts' event application to help provide families in need with this important service.
So, I have the resolution authorizing Rough Cuts Pet Grooming to hold a fundraising event Sunday, April twenty-second, twenty eighteen, eleven AM to two PM at Yorkshire Drive Park. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, we're getting there, Virginia. We were graciously contacted by, um, the family of Barbara Zaluski, a woman who was tragically killed in a snowstorm, in regards to, um, making a donation to the village, so we're in, deciding on how to move forward with that, that's something for our consideration as the board. Um, I have a resolution here. Next, I have a resolution authorizing Edward Malconis, Jim Janatino, Dan Kreshaw, Rob Magrino, Steve Conley and Amon Paffenrod to attend the meeting of the Rockland County Municipal Federation on April thirtieth, twenty eighteen at a cost of fifty dollars per person. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. I have a resolution accepting transfer of ownership from the town of Ramapo of Howard replica Seth Thomas four-sided clock to the village of Suffering. So, the, the town of Ramapo is relinquishing their ownership of that clock to the village of Suffering, um, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have to watch, uh, the mayor to sign the, uh, the attached, uh, letter of agreement.
And... Okay, and on the discussion, um, we plan on accepting this and changing, possibly changing the face and the insignia of the town of Ramapo to the village of Suffering. All in favor? All right, motion passes. More. Okay, so last but not, now last but last, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter to the New York State Liquor Authority allowing the Suffering Chamber of Commerce to attain, to obtain a temporary beer wine permit for the Suffering Street Fair to be held April fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion?
Yes, yes, um, I think that that resolution would be, uh, subject to, I mean, if upon the sufferance of the commerce, uh, if they are to wish to, uh, have this event, uh, at the parking lot, uh, somewhere has capital one, uh, they submit written, uh, proof that they have the authority to carry on this activity, uh, parking lot.
With, including the sale of alcohol?
Yep.
Okay, we just need to ensure that the Chamber of Commerce obtains and provides us this information in writing, authorizing the use of Capital One parking lot and authorizing any use of sale and consumption of alcohol. Any further discussion?
With that amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you.